The Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Nathan Ewing will be joining us again and presenting us with our invocation. Please make sure the microphone is on. State your name and then proceed.
Good evening. Well, I'm Nathan Ewing. I'm the pastor of Bethany Fellowship Church here in Liberty. And it's my privilege to be able to be here again and offer a word of prayer before we get started. I'm just going to read two short little things. The first one is out of Romans 13. It says, "Let every person be subject to the governing authorities, for no authority is except from God, and those that exist have been instituted by God." That's you guys. So, we do the electing, God does the appointing. You guys are here for a reason. And James 1:5 says, "If any of you lacks or needs wisdom, let him ask God, who gives generously to all who ask." So, that's what we're going to do. Just ask for wisdom and clarity for you all tonight as you talk about the business for you. Heavenly Father, we just know that it's a heavy thing to bear the burden of leadership. And so, as they discuss the business before them tonight, we just pray for wisdom, for clarity, for direction, as they make decisions that are going to govern the people of Clay County. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte, Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Mr. Carpenter.
Next is the approval of the agenda with that. Is there a motion related to this evening's agenda? There you go. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. Yes, I move to approve tonight's agenda as written.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda as written. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner. Motion passes six zero.
Especially in difficult times, and our employees don't let them down. The common factors in the county's success continue to be the professionalism, the commitment, the passion, and contribution of our employees. That's why we are so excited to celebrate this special week in recognition of our employees, their hard work, and their dedication. So, tonight, we're going to take time to celebrate the best of the best for Clay County employees. Twenty-two nominations were received from department directors, supervisors, managers, fellow county employees, office holders, and the public. And tonight, we will present awards in four different categories. So, if I could ask Presiding Commissioner to come down to the floor. And our HR Director, Kim Callahan, is going to assist in helping to give out the awards. We'll do them individually. And then, once we have handed out all our awards, then we will take just a moment of chaos and bring up all our recipients and take a picture with all of the commissioners at that time. So, please bear with us. Our first award that we're giving out tonight is our AAA Award. It's given in recognition of attitude, aptitude, and adaptability. So, we've all heard this saying, "It takes a village." And that certainly applies when various teams find themselves experiencing staffing shortages. Yet, the roles and responsibilities must go on. During a critical operational situation at the juvenile detention center, Claire Smith volunteered to help. Now, Claire doesn't normally work in the detention center and is not familiar with our operations. However, she jumped in, volunteered, and helped wherever needed, and even cleaned up a bodily fluid mess created by a juvenile being detained. She took it upon herself to clean the area so detention staff wouldn't have to, leaving them available to perform critical functions. This certainly goes beyond any expected role of somebody volunteering to help wherever they're needed. Claire's helpful attitude doesn't stop there. She looks for ways to be helpful in her position and enhance the services provided by the county. One example occurred when Claire proposed and was granted funding to become a safe crisis management trainer, creating the opportunity for all juvenile office personnel to be trained and enhance their skills. The nominee who wrote the nomination for Claire said, "Thank you for going above and beyond. You are a valuable employee, and we are grateful you are on our team. Please join me in congratulating Claire Smith on her AAA Award." And Claire, if you'll come up. Our second award recipient also is a AAA Award. You know, many times organizations hear, "That's not my job," from their employees. That is not the case with our Clay County team, and it is definitely not in Ted Swoboda's attitude in serving the Clay County community. During Ted's daily duties of checking county properties and policing county grounds, he came across what he suspected to be narcotics on the public roadway. Ted noticed a baggie containing a white powdered substance in the crosswalk between the Rooney Justice Center parking lot and the Justice Center building. Instead of just driving past the trash in the street, Ted grabbed a bucket from his gator, turned it upside down, and covered the baggie. He then took his gator and blocked the area of the crosswalk and the bucket. Ted immediately went into the Justice Center and notified a sheriff's deputy in the court security area who came and recovered the narcotics. Ted's commitment to the public was demonstrated by his quick action of taking the appropriate protocol and isolating the risk to others and the recognition of the potential or deadly harm this could cause to other individuals. Join me in congratulating Ted for his proactive action in addressing a dangerous situation. Our next category is called for our thoughtful innovation award. You know, when someone says innovation, individuals sometimes immediately jump to the conclusion that to be innovative, you have to do something like, oh, I don't know, invent the Internet. Has to be major. Reality is that organizations experience innovation in several ways. Taking time to implement a new service, streamlining a process, or restructuring or reformatting a process results in innovative ways to resolve issues, enhance efficiencies, or reduce costs. Through Trish Lewis's innovative efforts, she has overseen a restructuring of the criminal staff in the prosecutor's office. She's led the way in planning and executing efforts to improve workflow, processes, and procedures. She's advanced the objective of having a paperless filing system and increased the level of communication and teamwork within the prosecutor's office. Focusing on morale and culture within the office, Trish has devised and implemented several initiatives focused on employee satisfaction and office culture to improve the working environment and job satisfaction of the staff, breaking down barriers between the child support division, staff workers, and criminal staff. Please join me in congratulating Trish for her innovative approach to advancing the enhancements of the prosecutor's office. This year, the sheriff's office embarked upon a significant goal of obtaining accreditation from the National Institute of Jail Operations, also known as NIO, for the detention center. To be accredited, the organization must meet rigorous standards on policies, operational practices and procedures, training, and physical facilities. The team leading this project for the sheriff's office quickly came to realize that the initiative would need the assistance of our facility staff. Once contacted, our facilities team reorganized projects and schedules to accommodate the rigorous steps needed to assist the sheriff's office with this initiative. Working together through countless, and I mean countless, hours of meetings, creation and review of policies, and physical enhancements to the facility, the organization was ready for the NIO onsite inspection team. Together with the detention team, the facility staff also underwent review by the NIO inspection team on maintenance areas, tool control, staff training, and procedures as part of the accreditation process. The facility scored 100% in more than 600 core and non-core standards, receiving NIO's Level 1 accreditation, which is the highest level that they can give. No other county operated jail in the state of Missouri has received NIO's Level 1 accreditation. The NIO inspection team expressed high compliments to the professionalism demonstrated by the jail officers and staff they interacted with during their intensive onsite process. The inspectors went on to say that the facility was very clean and well-maintained. This significant accomplishment occurred because of our teams working together in a collaborative approach with a commitment of everyone focused on accomplishing this same goal. The work of these two teams demonstrates our organization's core values and what can be accomplished when we all work together. Please join me in congratulating our facilities and our detention center teams on the collaborative teamwork award. Okay, I know there's more people from facilities. That's you guys. Come on up. Absolutely.
We might need two rows. Tall in the back, please.
And facilities. Oh, wait, they're not done. And she's hitting facilities. Our Parks Department provides a variety of outdoor recreational opportunities, golf courses, marinas, campgrounds, trails, and historic sites, just to name a few. Operating these services and maintaining the facilities to meet customer expectations requires a dedicated team of individuals committed to providing an outstanding customer experience. With geographical challenges and diverse operations, this can only be accomplished by our team of professional empowered employees. Resolving issues quickly with a customer focus sets our Parks Team above any other Parks Department. An example occurred in July when one of our boat slipholders was having a really bad day. His front support weld snapped on his boat lift. The patron was on his boat when they broke, and he said his boat was pointed straight up, and he thought that his boat was going to go straight down to the bottom. The patron made his way to the park office and asked for help. Staff immediately came to the rescue, including providing him a pass for a temporary slip at one of our courtesy docks until he could retrieve his sinking boat lift and have it repaired. You know, lately, Mother Nature has been targeting our Parks Department recently, and our team focused on helping our patrons and working diligently to return the impacted areas back to being operational as quickly as possible. One of our patrons impacted by the storm said, "Staff was there in a matter of seconds to check on us and then had everyone there to clean up the campground. It was amazing to see everyone come together and how fast they all had the trees cleaned up. This just shows you the kind of people they have working for them and how fast everyone came together like they did. The support we had that day from the park staff to the sheriff's office was incredible. I am beyond thankful for everyone and will never be able to say thank you enough. The camp host drove down to check on us, and Bentley, their child, and I were drenched from head to toe, shivering and so cold. They had us get in their truck and drove us to the park office so we could be safe in case the storm wasn't over." Like this, the owner of the parks also came and checked on us and was kind to us. Just amazing how many people were there to help us. It's things like this that just provides there are still good people out there in this crazy world. Now, it's just not an emergency situation that our park team excels in customer service. These individuals in our Parks Department continue to do an extraordinary job and regularly receive five-star review and personal notes on various online platforms. And so, on the chart here, you'll see just a few that we have received recently, posted online by our patrons that have visited our parks. And you will see continually that when they're talking about staff, they talk about how friendly they are, how helpful they are. They talk about their experience there and how well-maintained our facilities are to giving them a quality experience. Please join me in expressing our gratitude to our Parks Department for providing outstanding customer service. So, we'd like to do a little chaos here with your indulgence and just take a minute to bring all our recipients up, everybody that's here, from all the departments representing, and the commissioners. And maybe if the commissioners stand up behind, we'll see if that will work, I think. And then, Megan may tell me I'm crazy that it won't fit, and we may have to go out into the lobby. Are you thinking lobby?
Possibly. I might with him. So, we try.
Try, try, okay.
Yeah, we'll try. Please come back up so we can get a dirt shot.
Yeah, you guys thought you could get away. Just give me one more minute.
I'm just going to grab a chair. I won't. I'm wearing flats. It's fine. Would have been a good night to remember that.
Oh, well, I'll leave that on. Safety is not watching.
Okay, if you can see my face, I can see yours. That's the rule of thumb. We're going to do this. Then, I'm going to do a panorama. This is a big group. Okay, thank you. Great job, everybody.
That brings us to the next item on our agenda. That would be public comments. Are there any members of the public who would care to make any comments at this time? Seeing none. Next is our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are five items on the consent agenda this evening. Commission meeting minutes from April 25th and May 2nd. Resolution 2024-152 is approving invoice payments for Clay County from April 27th to May 3rd. There are 243 invoices totaling $411,756.75. 2024 Ordinance 14 is a reappraisal and revision to the adopted budget of the current year for an amount of $21,800 in receipt of a grant for the juvenile court diversion. Resolution 2024-154 is approving an amendment number one to the City Works License and Maintenance Agreement. And Resolution 2024-155 is approving a general service agreement for Simtricity G.I.S. LLC.
Commissioner Johnson.
Move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been moved for the proposal of, excuse me, for the adoption of tonight's consent agenda. Are there, is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner. Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First on our regular agenda is 2024-156. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-156 is a request for waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to a county error by Stephen Crowley, and I believe the applicant is in the audience to provide information to the commission.
If you'd like to come forward, please make sure the microphone is on with the green light glowing. State your name and then proceed.
Good evening. I am Stephen Crowley.
Go ahead and explain your request for a waiver.
Sure. The, I had submitted my property taxes to the USPS on December 27th, somewhere between me submitting the check and you guys, the check was intercepted and forged for the same amount that I wrote the check to for Clay County. From that point on, I've been battling with my financial institution, trying to recover the funds. The funds were eventually recovered on April 30th, and I paid my outstanding balance on May 2nd, which was the, my amount for the original check, but I still have the outstanding penalties, fees, and outstanding interest that I'm asking to be waived.
With that, we will open the floor for questions from the commission. Commissioner Withington, you are first up.
I just want to say thanks to Dieta for helping on this. When you had contacted my office, I put him in touch with Dieta, and she was pretty quick to respond, so thank you, Dieta. I want to go ahead and make a motion that we approve this with the box marked "approved." If you look, you can tell that he wrote the check on December 26th. We've already, we know that the post office has had a lot of problems and everything, and, you know, I don't think it's fair that he's punished for somebody stealing your check and everything, so I say we go ahead and approve this with the box marked "approved."
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-156 with the box checked "approved." For the discussion, Commissioner Lawson.
You know, I was going to say the same thing. Through no fault of his own, it's quite obvious the check was made out. Obviously, we have the fraud report, so yeah, I agree with Commissioner Withington that this should be approved to not have him pay the penalty.
Any other commissioners wishing to ask or make some statement? Commissioner Carpenter. Oops. There you go.
Thank you, Commissioner. First of all, sorry you've had to go through this. We had somebody before who has. My parents went through the same thing, check got stolen out of the mailbox, you know, washed and deposited in the wrong account. They had to go through a fairly lengthy process to try to deal with that.
It's painful.
Unfortunately, never really got a law enforcement resolution in terms of, you know, catching the bad guys, kind of a thing. One question, did you not pay until the 2nd, though, May 2nd, in terms of sending the check in?
I recovered the funds on April 30th, and I paid on May 2nd.
I see. So, the delay in paying was just because you had to recover the funds.
Right. Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other commissioners wishing to speak? Do staff wish to make any statements? No. Okay. With that, if you have any closing remarks after you've had whatever you'd like to say to round it off, I will go to Commissioner Withington for his closing remarks and then to a vote. So, do you have anything you'd like to add before we go to a vote?
I just appreciate the consideration for my situation.
Very good. Since, oh, yeah, there, okay. Commissioner Withington, you are recognized for any closing comments and to close.
Yeah, I just want to say sorry that you had to go through this. Glad we're able to do something, try to help you, and I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you, and we appreciate you coming up here and making the effort so that we can try to serve you better, and I'm glad it went in your favor on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to 2024-153. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-153 is approve invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from April 27th to May 3rd. There are four invoices totaling $1,201.93.
Commissioner Johnson.
Move to approve 2024-153.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-153. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is 24 Ordinance 15. Administrator?
2024 Ordinance 15 is approving a state block grant agreement for the Clear Creek stabilization project at the Midwest National Air Center Airport, and Deputy County Administrator Coons is here to provide information on that project.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Commissioners. I was before you back in March where we approved our consultant agreement to start the project for the Clear Creek stabilization, which is located out next to our airport, and our stream bank is eroding and it's approaching closer to the runway safety area. I'm back here tonight because I'm asking for permission to enter into the agreement for the state block grant with MoDOT for a funding for this project. This is kind of part one, but the whole block grant is a 90-10 match. This first part is for preliminary design for the project, so I will have to come back later once we get it designed and know how we're going to approach the problem. So, because this is a 90, at this point, I should say, for this portion, $23,725 is available, and our portion of that that we would be responsible for is $2,637.
Good job. That is splendid work. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to comment? Commissioner Johnson.
Move to approve 2024 Ordinance 16.
15.
15.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024 Ordinance 15. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Next item on our agenda is 2024 Ordinance 16, Administrator?
2024 Ordinance 16 is approving an amendment number two to the state block grant agreement for extension to 2022 Ordinance-23 for the runway rehabilitation project at Midwest National Air Center, which will extend project completion date to August 30th, 2020, '25. Deputy County Administrator Coons is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is still the final piece of that runway rehabilitation project. The lights that were installed had a defect. They were holding water, which caused the bulbs to go out, so it has taken a very long time for the replacement product to come back in, and so the state is graciously granting us an extension so we can complete that work and have ample time to submit all final invoices so that we maintain our 90/10 match.
Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2024 Ordinance 16.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024 Ordinance 16. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Resolution 2024-151 is approving a rental agreement for a temporary emergency generator with Foley Power Solutions, and again, Deputy County Administrator Coons is here to provide information.
I promise this is the last request for the evening, and then I will go sit down.
You can sit there all night long if you'd like, as long as you're bringing good news.
Unfortunately, some of these storms that we've been going through play havoc on some of the equipment we, we do have. We had an issue with a bracket bearing breaking on a, on a bearing, which we were in generator load bank testing. It's time for all the generators to go through their formal rigorous certification that everything is working properly. These generators are tested monthly, but this was our annual inspection for load bank. The bracket broke and moved it into the fan shroud and caused a complete electrical short through the system. We did reach out and check our cooperative contracts. There is a generator already on site and has been since last week over at the Schrader Building, so that we are prepared for any of these additional storms, since we do have four different departments in that building, so we can be prepared if something should happen, that we have backup power. So this would approve us having that backup generator for, we've kind of planned for maybe somewhere between three to five months, because the lead time, if we decide to do repairs, one of the parts is already estimated at a 10-week lead time. The initial costs are coming in that we need to make a serious determination between making a repair versus a new generator, and this generator is from 2001.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2024-151.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-151. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Donna, just to double check, these sorts of issues are contemplated in our budget. I guess my general question is, I realize we needed, I'm going to vote for this, but did we, did we break the bank in the process?
So, this particular generator is not in our five-year CIP. We have two portable generators on site. Both of those generators, we've had for a long time, but the phase, the electrical phase at Schrader is a single phase, and we have three-phase generators, and so they were not compatible for that building, and Schrader is our one anomaly as to what phase that building is on.
Gotcha, gotcha. So, is there an adjustment that we may have to consider in the future because of this purchase or this, this rental? Again, I get it, want to vote for it, but I just want to know what's coming.
Well, at this point, we are waiting to see what the final costs are. We have one quote, the repair could be, to rebuild this whole engine could be around, and this is only one quote that we received so far, like $32,000. Purchase price for possibly a generator that they've specced out, we haven't done our research yet on whether we feel that's a good answer for us or not, was around $41,000. So, for a 2001 generator, $30,000 in parts, or a new one, around $41. So it's, at this point, I certainly hope I'll have to come back, at this point, we're not completely worried that we're going to have to come back and ask for additional funds.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Commissioner Johnson, I believe it was your motion?
My motion, and I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
The last item on this evening's regular agenda, I believe, is 2024-150, Administrator?
Resolution 2024-150 is approving the acceptance of a deed and a quick claim parcel to Gerald L. Benner and Virginia Benner, and County Councilor Graham is going to provide information to the Commission on this.
Thank you, Commission. Kevin Graham, County Counselor, I apologize in advance, it's going to take, it's a short story, but there's a little bit of a story, and, and this story begins in 1971. Fifty-three years ago, a company called R O W Construction prepared and signed a quick claim deed granting property to the county, and you might look, I think it should be, the map should be the last document in your packet, it's the long rectangle in green. So, in 1971, this company signed a quick claim deed to the county. Notably, the county never accepted the quick claim deed, and, and the quick claim deed was for a road easement. We never accepted it. I can find no record that we even knew about it. It is not one of our roads, we, we don't consider it one of our roads, we've never used it as one of our roads. It's essentially a long driveway. But for the last 53 years, that anomaly has been fine, and no one has raised a question. Now, apparently there is a real estate transaction, and the title company, I believe, like any good title company, found out that this 53-year-old document exists and said, hey, there's a bit of a problem, and so the attorney contacted me last week, and the simplest fix is going to be for us to sign a quick claim deed to, to the Benners and walk away from it. We never had it, we never accepted it to begin with, so it's, we've never considered it to be ours. I think it has historically for the last 53 years and probably before that, been a driveway for this property. The only slight change I'll draw your attention to, I've actually prepared an amended 150 to only address the quick claim deed. We originally talked about also doing an acceptance of the old deed and then a quick claim deed, and, and I'm not as comfortable with that, I think I'd prefer to just do the quick claim deed. I've talked to their attorney, and they're fine with that. So, my request, and happy to answer questions, but my request would be to approve 2024-150 as amended, and we can hopefully allow these folks to get their real estate closing done next week.
Procedurally, Mr. Counselor, so do we need to vote to accept the amendment, or is it included in what we have before us?
So, I've got the amendment here, which is, again, only the quick claim deed. What you have is the acceptance of the old deed plus the new quick claim deed. This is the quick claim deed only, and so a motion to approve the amended 150 would be my request.
So, we just need one vote, we don't need to vote to amend, and then a vote to adopt?
I think this will be good enough, yeah.
All right, very well. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Just so I understand with the properties that are on this map, we would basically give the long driveway to those who are trying to purchase the, the property which would appear on our top right hand?
It's, it is the top right hand, so I would, I would, the, the short answer is yes, the longer answer is that's not exactly right. We're not giving anybody anything, we're just saying-
But we claim that we have no claim to it.
We are claiming, no, whatever right we have, we are saying the Benners have, but we're not necessarily saying that we own that property.
Understood. So I guess my only other question, and again, it just may be, it's none of our deal, but I just want to be sure, on the bottom right, there is a house whose driveway goes into-
Yep.
-this little driveway-
Yep.
-that we don't own, and we don't have any claim for, correct? Do we care about that?
We do, and that's why you are ready for law school, that is why I-
Finally a life that I can get it behind, all right.
That is the exact reason that I'm asking for the amendment, because I don't want to necessarily, if we accept the, the old quick claim deed, we are, we become the owners, and then we would be actually giving that ownership right to the, the Benners at the end. I, I don't feel comfortable with that because of that house, and I tried to reach out to the owner of that house about four times, and I couldn't, they wouldn't return my call. So, what I don't know is if they have a claim to that, that's none of our business, that would be between them and the Benners.
By, by quick claiming it, that now becomes an issue for the Benners with the owner of that particular property, and we're out of that.
Yep.
Got it, all right, thank you.
Well done.
But you know what? Once in a while, I do okay, thank you.
Commissioner Withington?
I was going to ask that same question, but I, I do have another question. Are we going to have a same issue come up with the other, what appears to be long driveway to the west of this?
That looks to me to be a road.
Is that a road? Okay.
That looks to me to be a road to me, the one that runs on the left of the screen, if you say to the west, that probably is right. And I talked to another, I did talk to a lady up there in that area, and she's fine with this, but, but I don't think there's that issue. I mean, you know, and by the way, the thing I didn't tell you is, the company that did this in 1971 went out of business in the 90s, so we, we have no idea why they did it.
Commissioner Johnson?
I'd move to approve 2024-150 as amended.
Motion has been made for the approval of, get back on my page here, 2024-150 as amended. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. That concludes our regular agenda. Next, our discussion items, we have two. The first one is classification and comparison study consultant from Human Resources, so go ahead and proceed with that. Make sure your mic is on.
All right, good evening, Kim Callahan, HR Director. Okay, Clay County's existing classification and compensation study has not been reviewed and updated for over 15 years. So, it was bid out, and after the bidding process, we received 10 proposals. They were submitted, so we had a three-person committee to evaluate these proposals, and they were evaluated by experience, project approach, cost, expertise, and reliability. Then, we conducted an in-person interview with the top two vendors. After the interview, it was decided that McGrath Human Resources provided the overall best responses to meet the county's need. McGrath has been in business for 24 years. They specialize in compensation studies, performance management, development of policies and procedures. Similar projects in the area include the city of Excelsor Springs, they've done the city of North Kansas City, they've done Pleasant Valley, Missouri, Raymore, Missouri, Smithville, Missouri, and Boone County, Missouri. So they're very familiar with our market and the Kansas City region. They are committed, oops, oops, oops. There we go. They are committed to transparency. So, with engagement and collaboration, I'm sorry, I passed a, not bad. Nope, going the wrong way. Here we go. Is it on? There we go. Sorry. Okay. With engagement and collaboration, sorry. They will start with a kick-off project meeting, they will review position questionnaires, and they will interact with employees in, in regards to engagement and develop a plan for communication. So they're data-driven, collection and analysis. They will do a market data comparables with public and private. They will, every job title will complete a questionnaire, and then they will talk to the manager of that job title and update the job description, which is something that we've been working on for the past year and a half with every department. They knew this, you know, we were hoping this was going to happen, and they've been working on that, but then McGrath will take over and, and take a look at it. So, our current systems are going to look at our salary structure, look at compression, and see what works and what doesn't work. So, it's truly a comprehensive process, which is why it takes so long. With the, with the system development together, we will determine the system that's going to meet Clay County's needs. So, they will look at the market compression, internal equity, and the comparable to the, the market. So that's when they really start designing the system. So, on feedback, they're going to meet with administration, with HR and department heads individually to review position placements prior to finalization. They will review costing, they will look at different strategies when we are discussing implementation, depending on cost and what we can afford. And finally, in their final report, they will outline their study mythology, provide data analysis summary, salary structure classifications, they will provide policy recommendations and procedures for ongoing administration and maintenance. So, they will do an executive report for the public and for the County Commission, they will do a final presentation for the County Commission and for the employees. They also have an appeals process with the consultants with employees that feel like maybe their position missed the mark, so they have a process that they work with employees. So, they also provide training and future support. So, the total cost for this is $133,608, and there's a possible of 5,000 max travel, so at the most, it would be $138,608. So, we're hoping to receive an approval next week so we can get started as soon as possible. We're looking at a seven-month process, so if we start in June, we'll be able to finalize it in December. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I have Dr. McGrath here today to answer any of your questions also.
Commissioner Lawson, I believe you wish to start recognition?
Yeah, I do. I noticed it was $133, a little bit better than the $250,000, $133,608. What, who's the 5,000 travel for?
Well, when, when we have meetings in, in person, you know, they have some, they have someone in Columbia, Missouri, but they are out of Tennessee.
So, our people will be traveling?
No, no, they will come here.
They will be traveling?
Most of it will be virtual.
The team will be traveling?
Yeah, it'll be virtual, and-
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, and that's the max, so it may not be that much.
Yeah, and, and so in doing, conducting this study then, they will also be looking at, like counties, say like St. Louis County, or, you know, Class A counties and what their people are paid, and-
Right, a comparable market, yes.
Okay, it says that they will train HR for maintenance of the system. So, will that enable you in future to discuss these different issues that they're, they're going to bring forward with future employees, or what exactly are, what maintenance of the system?
I'll direct that to Dr. McGrath for you. Yes, at the end of the program, we, there's a couple ways in which the county can go. One, it can be self-sustaining. There's something that's listed up there called a point factoring. Employees will be asked to fill out a position questionnaire. That questionnaire evaluates a job into 13 different competencies, which helps us compare and contrast that. We give the option to our clients to either say, do you want to be trained in it, and do you want to do it yourself and keep, maintain it, and that's- And that's especially, you know, you're gonna use that for new positions. Positions change, there might be a department reorganization. How has that changed with the organization? They can ask us to keep it up for it and then we charge a per price, a per position of fee for it. Or it could be done both. You know, HR can do it, but if there's a very politically sensitive position or one in HR where people might have the perception that they may not be objective, even though I'm sure they will be, they could do it themselves. So it's really an option what they want to do. I have some that want to keep it and I have others that want us to do it so that they can turn around and say it's what the consultant said.
Okay. As it's done, I think the idea was every five years or so that that would be done?
We recommend every three to five years, you should be doing an update to your schedule. We say three to five. It really depends upon what's going on with the economy. Right now, if you're not keeping up and looking at what's going on every three years, you're gonna fall behind. Now, again, that, the economy might change in the next year or two. Unfortunately, my crystal ball for that's pretty cloudy right now. But as long as you keep it up on a regular basis, you won't have to turn around and potentially bear the expense of what you didn't do for 15 years.
Okay. And then, so if you do this every five years, say every five years?
Sure.
Is it another $133,000?
No, typically those are much smaller because we've got the structure built. So it's going out and doing a market analysis and then looking at the structure. Sometimes it might be meeting with department directors if things have significantly changed within the department. And then it's just updating and or tweaking the system. So usually it's about half. But again, you know, that's kind of the rule, depending on what you want to have done. Some places want very little done and other places we're back out doing department head meetings and then obviously then the cost of that be a little more. But no, the initial cost now is just all the work that goes with creating it.
Sure, sure. Yeah. Well, you know, my feeling is you want, we, tonight, we gave all these awards out to our stellar people. We've got the best staff going and I firmly believe that. I want them to have every possibility of getting the proper amount of money and all the rest that goes with it. It isn't always just money.
Correct.
So, you know, we want, we want to be, well, open to doing the best we can and hold on to these people so they aren't leaving pretty soon and go work for somebody else where they get more money. That's part of it. The other part of it is the environment that they work in. That we want that to be the most pleasant thing we can give them as well. But sometimes it's not always just about the money. But I, I, I said at the outset, I thought this was an unbelievable amount of money, the 250 that it was originally budgeted. I still think this is an extreme amount of money. However, I do see the value. I know there's other ways out there that you can do it for one hell of a lot less. But I don't think I've got the backing for that. But I'm just saying that while I, I want our people to have every advantage they can have, I think that's an unbelievable amount of funds being spent for this study. I really do. So, you know, how everybody else feels, I'm always gonna go with the group. But I just think that's, that's a lot of money.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, sir. A couple of comments and questions. First, regarding Commissioner Lawson's comments on the price tag. It is a lot of money, I agree with that. But I also haven't been through a couple of these. I realize how much work goes into these. And there's a lot of work that goes into it. The good thing is we're coming a little over $100,000 under what we originally thought it might be, so that's good. My hope is that that money is not looked at as extra money, but we're gonna need money to fix the problem that they're gonna find out for us that we have as far as, as far as pay equity. And with that in mind, when I've gone through these before, one of the biggest, I guess, consternations that this creates amongst employees is normally employees will fill out a survey and list their, their job, the details of their job, what they do in their position, you know, what their job entails, their responsibility, that kind of thing. And you're shaking hands, so I imagine that's what happens here, right?
Yes.
And so what often happens, I'm sure it's gonna happen here, is we're gonna find that we have employees working out of classification. Sometimes under classification, but most time they're working out above the classification, doing more things than what they're, than what they should be doing in that classification. So when that happens, how do you handle that? What happens with that?
Sure. We look at each position and then evaluate it. So we're not looking at your current structure and where it is and what, and just the job description, which is why I know the county has been doing a really good job of updating the job descriptions. But the questionnaire goes into more detail than what a job description does. And then we're gonna place those positions based upon that analysis. To give you an example, I'm gonna pick on administrative assistants. Because everybody, of course, believes that their administrative assistant does more work than the administrative assistant across the hall. And so there's times where we actually, personally, I have five computer screens and I'll have four or five administrative assistant positions up comparing and contrasting and what's the differences. And if we do change those classifications, here's the criteria that then goes with each classification. When employees are placed, let's assume for a second that they were placed as administrative assistant three and we find out they should be an administrative assistant one. First of all, no employee ever is recommended to have a pay decrease. That does not sell very well. So no employees will lose pay as a result of it. They may be at the upper end of the range. In some various rare situations, we might have people that are now above the range that they were placed in. Again, no pay cut, but they may not get an increase for one or two years until that salary schedule keeps up. But again, I don't know whether or not that's going to happen here with your system since I haven't looked at it yet.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Commissioner Lawson?
Thank you. Quick question. Diana, probably you'd be the best person to answer. So say that, that we have an individual, we find out that the classification they're in is not really where they, they should be, a little bit higher, a little bit more money and all of that. Once this is all done and the classifications are out there and we see how we compare, you know, it's all done steady, then are we going to go ahead and activate what these people bring back to us as far as upgraded classifications, salaries, that kind of thing?
Right. So the entire classification compensation plan will come back to the commission. What does it look like? And so I think that Dr. McGrath's point is, to Commissioner Johnson's question is, it's really worth starting all over. So nobody technically going forward is in a classification. So that will be all created. Then it will be looking at, you know, what is the market for similar positions? We look at internal equity. And they will run numbers to say, well, you have X amount of employees that are now below the market, right, of the new classification that they belong in. So what is that going to cost us to bring them up to the market? And then we have to look at compression, right? So if they've been with us for a number of years, you've heard that from Sheriff Aiken, he talks about compression. If I'm raising my starting salary, then I've gotta look at the employees that have been here for a while. So part of it in working and that the consultant is charged with is, when the plan is done, tell me what it's gonna cost to implement it. And then the question is, can we afford it all at once? Or do we have to create a strategy to do it over a couple of years? And so we will come back to the commission with all of that and what our recommendation is and how that can be financially feasible.
Okay. One final question, then I'll shut up. How are we going to progress on this? Are we going to, and I'd like for a decision to be given now. Are we going to continue to have people come in and do this? Or are we gonna train our people and then go ahead and let them and give them the power to do exactly what they've been trained to do?
Right. So the goal, I believe, for us is certainly we want to train our HR staff. Because one of the, one of the tasks that I give to a department is when they have a vacant position, the task we give them is, do you still need that position or do you need a different position? So for example, they may have a vacancy and said, you know, I've had, you know, blah, blah, blah for five years, 10 years, whatever, but things have changed. I've got different skill sets over here, here's my gap. So I want to create a new job. So we'll work with the departments, they'll have to create a description, job description. And from that, the training that HR will have using the point factor is based on the criteria of that position, where does it fit in the pay plan? So some of that, absolutely, we intend that our own staff can manage and make sure that we have internal equity and that we're staying consistent. Now, there may be some very difficult positions, something really crazy that a department comes up with and nobody else has. And so we may want to call upon our consultant to use them. Or I think as Dr. McGrath said, you know, if it's an HR position, then we may want to use the third party just to make sure everybody is comfortable with what that looks like. But using them going forward is, again, taking a look every five years, have we kept up with the market? And again, it wouldn't be as much as it is now because we're making up for 15 years of not looking at our system.
Yeah. And that's not fair to our people. But in that, then in the instance that you spoke of, it will be a situation where we will use her as we need her for consulting at a fee of some nature, but not coming and doing it all over again and go from scratch.
When we get to that five-year, that we will come back to the commission and the budget process and it will be just like it was this year. We will recommend to you that we need to set some money aside to bring in to do sort of the market analysis touchpoint, you know, in five years from now. And so that will be a decision of the commission to do that.
Yeah. I'll still be here in five years, so.
That's a good thing.
Okay, well, that's all I.
And even if the county does decide to do the point factoring and the placement on their own, no offense to the colleague to the left, but I'm not an attorney, so we don't charge by the hour. Phone calls are typically free, sorry. Nothing like getting your attorney mad at me. But so we're, you know, our goal is to build a relationship with our clients and, you know, hey, I'm thinking about doing this, what are your thoughts? Now, if it's asking us to do the work, we would talk about that. But, you know, a lot of times it's just like, hey, yeah, that's, you're right on the marker. Eh, did you consider this? Maybe you want to take a look at that. You know, I've got some clients that I'm still working with since 2004, you know, so.
Well, I will say this, I'm going to support this. But Katie bar the door, if, once this study is done, we don't put this thing into practical use, I'm going to go crazy. Because that's, I, I, we, we talk all the time about roads and bridges. We talk about, you know, all the different things, people, we'd like to give them more money and, and I want all that to happen. But this is a, to me, this is an unbelievable amount of money. If in the end, it proves to be beneficial to our people and the study is one that we utilize, because I, we all know that oftentimes in business, you go through these big studies and we do all this stuff and then nothing ever happens. You never see anything come of it. So I want to make sure that when this is done, we enact it in some way and make something wonderful happen for our people. And then from that point on, Cookie, it's up to you, so anyway.
And I do want to echo that because that's our reputation as well. You know, we don't like to spend the money and then find out that it sits on a shelf because that doesn't do anybody any good. Sure. And I would say, you know, part of this process is a communication plan with our employees and keeping them informed through the entire process. And so there will be expectations by our employees that, what this outcome is going to be. And so we want to make sure, you know, that we are truly transparent about what that looks like. I also want to say, which we really didn't touch on, but while certainly the pay, the classification, the structure is part of it, but we also have a component of looking at our benefits. So are there other things that we could be doing besides wages that we're not doing and how do we compare with our benefits? Because it is about the total package, right? That we offer our employees.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson? Hold on a moment, I think, there you go.
Sorry. Roughly, how many people you have working on this?
I think our team right now consists of five.
Five people? Okay, just to help Commissioner Lawson, this might put in perspective. If we were to hire one employee for one year at about $80,000 to $90,000, fully funded, comes out to probably about, with benefits, about, about the same amount, about $130,000 for a single employee to take one year to do this. So that's about what we're doing. I think the important thing, as you talk about implementing this, I agree. I mean, you see so many times government will do studies or whatever it is and the only thing, the problem is, we have to have the money to implement it. So we need to start thinking as a commission, thinking now, projecting, hey, there's probably gonna be some raises involved with this, I would hope. And how are we gonna pay for those? And so, you know, when things come before us that, you know, people want money from the commission, we have to say no to certain things and make this a priority down the road. Because that's, that's gonna be the bigger challenge, I think, is finding that money.
Well, it is. And Commissioner Johnson brought up a good point, you know. In full transparency, there's $250,000 in the budget for this project. And so while this comes underneath that, you know, our goal would be, as Commissioner Johnson said, we know there's gonna be some implementation costs. And so, you know, we're keeping those funds in the project fund because that will help us, you know, as we determine what the outcome is and how are we going to finance and implement it.
Any further discussion or questions before we end this discussion? Seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation.
So just for next steps for the commission, this will be on your agenda next week for authorization of the contract. And once that's started, then we will begin the project.
Thank you. The second discussion item we have is migrant resolution discussion. This would be Commissioner Johnson's item. Commissioner, I will go ahead and give you the floor to begin this discussion.
Thank you, sir. So I don't know how much time I want to take talking about this, but I suppose I should do a quick review for those who are just tuning in and don't understand or know where this came from. But several weeks ago, the mayor of Kansas City, Missouri, put some information out publicly through X and interviews, that kind of stuff, essentially inviting some of the immigrants from, he specifically mentioned Denver and New York, both sanctuary cities, inviting them to come to Kansas City to help relieve some of the pressure off Denver and New York as well as some others. Obviously, a lot of people were upset about that, concerned that, hey, he's inviting illegal immigrants to Kansas City. The mayor tried to clarify that by saying, no, I just want illegals with work visas. But of course, if he wants to, my opinion, if he wants to alleviate the problem that New York and Denver are having, that other sanctuary cities are having, it's the illegals that are the problem for him, not the legals with work permits, work visas. Councilman Nathan Willett put on the docket for the Kansas City council to look at, basically just underscoring, hey, these are the rules now. Let's make sure everyone's clear that we're not a sanctuary city. We're not going to be a sanctuary city. And the mayor kind of, the mayor and a couple others said, no, we don't even want to, we don't even want to deal with that. We're not gonna support that either. A couple different resolutions came before this body a couple weeks ago. Commissioner, President Commissioner Nolte had one, Commissioner Lawson, and actually Commissioner Withington started with one. We didn't actually bring it to the commission, but he started putting one together. And then I was asked if I would take a stab at it myself. So I tried to look at, at what the other commissioners had done as well as some of the discussions that took place up here before. And I thought I could do something very simple and short. The short part didn't come through on this, it's almost a full page and I wish it was shorter than it is and I apologize for that. But I think it's fairly simple. And so what I did with this resolution is, is there's really three, three parts to it. The first two as's are the first sentence, two sentences are why I think we need this resolution. And I think we all pretty much agreed on most of this in our previous discussions. The next, it looks like seven were as's, simply state the current laws, federal and state laws pertaining to illegal immigration, sanctuary cities, hiring illegals, all that kind of stuff. I didn't add anything there except for what the law says. So I tried to keep this fairly not political, if you will, just stated laws. And then the last two, the end is two resolutions or resolves. The first resolve is that we do not welcome illegal aliens, is the word I use because that's what the law uses. We not welcome any illegal aliens and that we, and that we support the laws that are on the books. And then the next, the last resolve. And then the next, the last resolve, makes a clear distinction between illegals and legal immigrants, and we certainly welcome those who come to this country legally. And that was a point we wanted to make sure that we made a separation. There's illegals, and there are people that are here legally, that migrate here legally. And those people, we certainly welcome, and we want to make that clear in this resolution. So that's what I did with the, with that last resolve here. I'm not going to read the whole thing, I think everybody has it or can view it online, so I won't go through that. I will just say one more comment about, I kind of digress a little bit, but about leadership, and why I think it's important that we pass this or something similar to this. You know, a lot of us are in positions of leadership, whether we're elected to position of leadership, or many of you out here are in position of leadership because you're a manager or supervisor of some sort. And most of you have all gone to schools and read books on leadership, and leadership versus management, and what's the difference, and all those kinds of things. I'll tell you, for me, it boils down to one thing when it comes to leadership. Leadership is about the culture. Leaders establish the culture, whether it's in an organization, and within organizations there's various leaders, but, you know, there's a different culture that exists at the sheriff's office than exists probably in the highway department. And within the sheriff's office, there's probably different cultures that exist on the SWAT team, or the SRT team, or whatever they call it, the special tactics team, than exists on the school resource team. And there's just different cultures, and those cultures are established by the leaders. It's either the leaders that are put in place to establish that culture, and someone that comes in and takes a look at that culture and says, you know what, I don't like this, I'm going to change this, we're going to tweak this. Or if the leaders that are put in position don't do it, the formal leaders, then the informal leaders will step up, and they'll create a culture that maybe we don't like. And so being in position of leadership, I think it's our job to establish the culture. And you look no further than the past two presidencies, the current presidency of Joe Biden, or President Biden and President Trump before. And I'm not making any claim to either president right now, which is better, which is worse, but there's a clear distinction in the culture that they created when it comes to the immigration, both through their action and through their words. Nobody can, nobody can dispute that. It's clearly different, and that's what leadership is. And so we have the same situation here. We have a leader in Kansas City, the mayor, who has a pretty loud voice, saying, hey, we welcome all of you here. And whether or not he meant illegals or not, that certainly is, certainly the message some people feel. And what really matters, if those illegals feel that that's the message that they're getting, that, hey, he's underhandedly saying, come on over. Well, if that's the message they're getting, we want to make sure it's clear to them, no, that's not the message. That's not the message from Clay County. And so this resolution, somebody says, hey, we welcome those who are legal. But if you're not legal, if you're a criminal, you came here illegally, you're not welcome here. This is not and will not be a sanctuary, there is not and will not ever be a sanctuary city in this county or Missouri for that matter. It's illegal. It's against our laws. So I just reiterated those laws here, and in the resolves, as I mentioned, illegals are not welcome. If you're legal, come join our community and be a productive member here in Clay County. So with that, I'll yield to my colleagues for comments. I'm going to go to Commissioner Lawson next, but before we do, I want to make sure it's something that the commissioner said is understood, because I think it's an important point. You used the word illegal alien, I believe. People get offended by this terminology, but there's a reason that it was used when we wrote that Missouri law, and that is because it was used in federal law. It was an attempt to seamlessly make a vertical integration of what the law says. We have to use the same terminology, or it gets very, very confusing. So I want to point that out, because I don't want anybody to get the wrong impression and misinterpret what Commissioner Johnson is saying. He is not saying things meant to be insulting or hurtful. He is, he is using the terms that were, that were placed in federal law, then adopted into state law, because that is the way you make sure you have a clear, consistent legal system that is easy to navigate for any of the, anybody who's participating in it. I do have some other comments to make, but Commissioner Lawson, I think, should be heard next. Commissioner?
Thank you very much. You know, when I initially brought my document forward, the way I looked at it is with, that, you know, I wanted to see us be very active in what we did, very proactive, not wait around until we're inundated with illegals and then try to come up with something. And so I was gratified when Commissioner Johnson kind of took some things from me, some things from what Commissioner Knowles did, and brought forth a document. It's funny that this all came about, because today on my email, I got a thing, it's called "New Local Government Responds to Top Election Year Issues." And the issues were, number one was inflation, which we all crybaby about, second one, immigration, third one, crime, climate change, and abortion. Those were the big issues that everybody was worried about in this upcoming election. The other day, when we talked about this initially, and I asked the sheriff to come forward and speak, I got to say, while I love that man, and I think he's exemplary, I was so disappointed in, in the way that he phrased it. He looked at it more not, what's going to happen, but my people, here's what my people can only do. And I respect him for that, and he's right in what he's saying. But I also think, if he were here, I could say to him, how are you going to handle, if we get a lot of illegals coming in, how are you going to handle the lawlessness? That's going to take more of your people, it's going to take more time for your people, away from helping those people who need help that are here legally, me, all of you. You know, funny, I'll say this, to me, if you remember, my dad's people were here when you all came. So to me, you're all illegal. But on my mother's side, they came from Yugoslavia, and they, my grandfather came around early 1900s. He left his wife, who was pregnant at the time, my grandmother, and the oldest son, behind. He came here and he worked his butt off for 10 years, 10 years. Then he brought them over, but because of my, the aunt's age, she wasn't old enough to come, she had to wait for two more years there with the other family members, and then come by herself. Once that they got here, then they went to work. Nobody gave them a darn thing. Nobody handed them anything. Nobody said you can come in illegally. They came through Ellis Island, they always told me stories about, you know, how frightening it was, there were cages and all this other stuff. But they did it the right way, and all of your families did it the right way. If anybody sitting up here has firsthand knowledge about what it's like for illegals, it'd be Commissioner Johnson. His area was practically on the border. He saw the, all of the problems that incurred because of illegal migration. And so I respect him for that, and I feel that we should go ahead, do this now, don't wait till it's too late. Maybe our voice may not make a difference to Q, but it might, and that he knows that we're not going to stand by and just say, do whatever in the hell you want to do. The fact that he would not even look at his own councilman's request for a document to say, let's bring the legals, but not the illegals, the fact that he didn't do that makes me have a strange feeling in the pit of my stomach that we're going to see illegals as well as legals coming. So while I'm all for the people coming legally, they come and make themselves a part of our community, like the people did long ago, I still think that, that this is something that has to happen. We need to have some guts and get this thing done, and then everybody knows where Clay County stands. And we've let our people that are, that have put us in office, know that we're willing to step up and do something, and not just sit back and say, eh, we don't want to hurt anybody's feelings. No, we've got to be, we've got to do this. So with that, I, you know, I'm hoping that, that all of us will feel the same. But thank you very much, and thank you for doing this.
Commissioner Johnson. There are two issues that, to me, kind of jumped out at the beginning of, the first one being the legality of it. Obviously, we've talked about the sanctuary city, and I will extend that, say sanctuary jurisdiction, because it does flow that way, I think it could conceivably flow that way. It is important that we, as members of the government, act in a legal manner. This is not the first time that the mayor of Kansas City has been acting in a manner contrary to state law. I just got an email this morning regarding our TIF commission, and they're preparing to sit without ceding the TIF commissioners that were legally put forth, and it's been over years. So this is not exactly the first time that there has been a skirting, in my opinion, of the law. You can say you're not breaking the law, it's a little like if a highway patrolman stops you and says you were going 95 miles an hour. A defense is not saying, no, I wasn't. If you're speeding, you're speeding. If it talks, if it cracks like a duck and walks like a duck, it is likely a duck. So I think that it's important that we do that. There are certainly provisions in this year's state budget that refer to sanctuary city or sanctuary jurisdictions, and that they would then be ineligible for funding from the state, and how they would go about that. So it's something that is certainly an issue that could possibly come back, and I think the idea of us putting forth this, this affirmative statement helps to shield us from any possible implications that we are in fact going along with this policy. It's a very simple policy, it's not too different than what was brought for the city council, and that was just to say, we are going to obey the law. It is insane in some ways to have to say that, but we are living right now in times where lawlessness is tolerated and sometimes encouraged. We, as elected officials, I think are held to a higher standard of trying to have, to obey the law and to honor the law. So that, I think, is one of the issues, because there's also no way of telling whether or not a person is here legal or illegally without detaining them. I'm not sure that we really want to have a society where we have armed officers stopping you and saying, papers, please, just because of the way you look or the way you speak. And I don't think there, I don't think there are any law enforcement officers who would subscribe to that kind of behavior. I think they are decent men and women, and would be inclined to just, you know, to stay within their lane, to stay within their province as far as the law goes. The other thing that concerns me is the cost, because we are a very spread-out city. We have, 50% of our population is, is in the city limits of Kansas City. So half our population are Kansas Cityans. If you bring in a large number of people, there is no way that you can, I don't see how you, you enforce a restriction of movement on people coming into this area. You can't deny a person who comes, say, in a bus or an airplane, and say, you may stay in Kansas City, but you may not go into Liberty, you may not go into Gladstone. We just, it is impossible, it's impractical, and it's wrong to do that kind of a thing. They will, in fact, be dispersed among the areas here, so they will come within the jurisdictions of not just the counties, but also a lot of the municipalities. Something I've, I had mentioned before, and that is, the projections by the mayor of New York was that they would, they would cost, I want to say, $10 to $12 billion by next summer, about 14 months from now, for them to deal with their problem, which is a larger number than we have. That is certainly granted. The fact that the mayor did make this appeal to self-proclaim sanctuary cities, I think, gives some credence to the idea that he might not be totally sincere in his thoughts to just bring those in who have work permits. But in the, in Denver, which is a little bit more our size, the Denver City Council is considering cuts of $41 million from the budget to support the migrant crisis. This is from KDVR Television, or no, it's the Fox affiliate out there, Fox 13 in Denver. In dollar amounts, they're looking at, the police department is expecting an $8.4 million cut, the sheriff's office is looking ahead to a $3.8 million cut, and the fire departments anticipate $2.4 million cuts to the budget, among other cuts that they've listed here. They've got to get that $41 million from someplace. And it's going to be coming out of some of these services that we are to provide to our citizens. The city of Kansas City and their budget, if I understand correctly, has allocated $1 million. As I've said, if you want to know whether the shortfall is going to come, look around at the county and municipal governments. That's where the money is going to come from. We just, Commissioner Johnson had just made reference to the fact that to, to implement our, our program for employees, we're going to be needing to be carefully considering future expenses. If we are in fact, these people, these individuals are brought in, we are going to be looking at a lot more expense that is really no way to account for, and there is no way to estimate. It could be 500, it could be 5,000, we don't know. One thing I think is a fairly safe assumption is, when you talk to the, to the mayors or the city councils of Denver and New York, I'd be willing to bet they're not going to be screening for the best and brightest of these individuals to ship here. I think we're probably going to get the ones that they might not be quite as anxious to retain. So it's, it's going to, it's going to result in a lot of people that are getting services from the, from the government, and appropriately so. We have a homeless situation we need to deal with, and I hope that we are able to deal with it, but we don't solve that problem by bringing in a large number of people who then have to be housed, have to be fed, and they have to be looked after through our health systems. To do otherwise would be, would be inhumane to a very large degree. But I think those are things that we have to consider. I think we have to consider the rightness and the wrongness of this, and I think we need to consider what this impact is going to be in, on our people, both as far as governmental expenditures, and on the systems that they depend on, and their, and their job prospects. I think it's something we need to make this declaration, and I guess my final point would be, by making this declaration now, in the terms that Commissioner Johnson had been talking about, which, by the way, I certainly appreciate the work you put in on this, but by making that declaration now, I believe we also bring, we provide some example and some courage to some of our surrounding communities who will follow suit. And in fact, I'm aware that there are some communities that are considering these kinds of things. I think, the other point that Commissioner Johnson made is providing leadership. I think that's the responsibility of the county. I don't think we, as county government, I don't believe it's our position and our place to dictate to other, other subdivisions. However, I think it is our place to set an example, to provide an umbrella when necessary for different activities, and to make sure that we are acting and performing as a community and not as a bunch of individuals who are, who are working at cross purposes, but when possible, inspire a spirit of cooperation. So those are my two cents worth in, and I certainly appreciate and would be supportive of Commissioner Johnson's resolution, I assume should have come forth in the next week or so. Is there anyone else who would like to join the discussion? Seeing none, I guess I wore you all out, I don't know. I'm sorry, Commissioner Carp, and you are seeking recognition.
Thank you, I wanted to give my, my other colleagues a chance to buzz in first if they, if they wanted. So, you know, I, what I'll say is this, we all have our own opinions on these issues, obviously. This is a big, decades-long federal issue that, that needs to be resolved, and it's a serious one, you'll get an argument from me there. To me, I think this is more a question of sort of tone in terms of what I think we ought to pass, and what I would prefer to support. I know we've seen several different iterations from four commissioners now, sort of taking a stab at it, and I am grateful to all of you for the work you've put in. I'll just say, the one that I felt most aligned with, in terms of tone, in terms of the message I would like to send, is the one that was distributed by Commissioner Withington. And so that's where I'm at, is that, that's the one I would like to support. I think it does a good job of, in pretty simple terms, stating that we support legal immigration, and also that we're not going to be a sanctuary city or county, and that we should follow the law. we should follow the law. And I think it hits those points. I agree with those points. And so that's what I would like to throw my support behind. And yeah, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Withington, you are next to be recognized.
So I know I had mine taken off the agenda for Jay's, but I'm just going to go ahead and read it real quick. It said, and I've sent this to everybody, so everybody's seen it. It just says, whereas Clay County supports legal migrants, or immigration into the United States, and whereas Clay County recognizes the plight of those seeking refuge and asylum from oppressive governments and other parts of the world, and whereas Clay County respects the history of the United States as a beacon of freedom and opportunity in the world, and whereas the Clay County Board of Commissioners encourages all villages, cities, municipalities in Clay County to follow state and federal law with regards to immigration policy. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners declares that Clay County is not a sanctuary county and will not directly open shelters or provide services other than emergency services to uninvited illegal migrants and/or undocumented migrants that may arrive in unincorporated Clay County. Clay County will continue to prioritize the needs of our local citizens. So I put that together, I know it's not as long as Jay's, but I think it hits the main point, you know, declares we're not a sanctuary county. You know, like you guys said, we can't dictate to cities what they do, but we can encourage them to follow state and federal laws. And then it also clearly states that, I know Jerry, you had mentioned just now the cost. Well, I don't understand how we can have a cost to the county if we just don't budget for, you know, immigration services. You know, you said Kansas City was going to have a million dollars and we don't know what that price tag would be for the county. Well, this clearly says we're not going to provide services. So if we don't budget anything, then it shouldn't cost the county anything, right? And, you know, here's another, here's another thing where I'm at. So I know last time I mentioned that, you know, as the only independent up here, not associated with a political party, I mentioned that this is a federal issue and I mentioned that the federal government hasn't done anything on this. You know, in 2007, George Bush pushed, tried to push forward comprehensive immigration reform and he had a bipartisan support and then it fell through. Barack Obama had a bipartisan thing and the Republicans at the very end backed out. And then in 2018, the Republicans got what they wanted, you know? The, they were, the dog finally caught the car, just didn't know what to do with it when it did, and they backed out at the very end because, you know, they were getting pushed back from the far right. So here's what my challenge to all you guys who are affiliated with the Democratic Party and the Republican Party, you guys need to go to your central committees. You guys need to have your central committees start putting pressure on your congressman. Cleaver's been in office for 20 something years. Sam Graves has been in office for a quarter of a century. You guys need to be having your central committees put pressure on your congressman to actually do something at the federal level. Like I said last time, this county commission's not going to solve immigration, but I know that the state legislature has some, you know, what was it, Senator Danny Haskins, is that his name?
Hoskins.
Hoskins. He's introduced some legislation. So it looks like the state's working on it. It's your federal government that's failing you on this. The federal government does not want to solve this problem. Like I told you guys the last time, this is a wedge issue. This is how they energize their base. And until your guys' congressmen do something and your political parties in DC do something, this is never going to get solved. But yeah, so I mean, I don't have anything necessarily wrong with Jay's, but I think simpler is better. And I think, you know, what I presented, you know, gets that point across.
How do you get much clearer?
Clay County is not a sanctuary county and will not directly open shelters or provide services other than emergency services to uninvited illegal migrants and/or undocumented immigrants that may arrive in unincorporated Clay County. So I thought it was important to say unincorporated Clay County. That's the only thing that we had jurisdiction over. So, but that's where I'm at. So I would like to challenge you guys to get with your guys' central committees and put pressure on your congressmen, you know, Graves and Cleaver.
I'll go to Commissioner Wagner next, but before I do, since you had mentioned that, I do not agree with your assertion that it would not cost money. We can of course discuss that. I would also say that comprehensive legislation is possible. We did it in 2008, which is what we are discussing right now. So I would say that it is inaccurate to say that legislatures have not, have not addressed comprehensive legislation. I will agree with you, the federal government has done an abysmal job for the most part. With that, yes, go ahead.
Please turn me back on.
Hold on a moment.
So if you, if you go back and listen to what I said, I didn't say the state, when you were in, I know you were going to take offense to that because you were in the legislature and I wasn't attacking you when you were in the legislature. So I didn't mention you or the legislature. I said Congress. So that wasn't toward, towards anything you guys did in 2008 when you were in Jeff City. I said Congress. Congress has failed this country when it comes to immigration, both Republicans and Democrats for decades. And until they get their asses, you know, make this a priority and get, you know, everything, start working for the people of this country, nothing's going to change. They've proven that anytime, look at Marco Rubio. Marco Rubio, he was a darling of the conservative right. He got on board with him in comprehensive immigration reform and the right destroyed him. So until they put the toxic politics aside at the federal level and actually make it a priority to come up with a bipartisan comprehensive immigration plan, nothing's going to change. And that's, that's my point. So I wasn't attacking you, Jerry.
No, I didn't, I didn't take it as an attack. I was doing more for an accuracy thing. By the way, one of the motivations for us to pass that particular legislation, apart from the obvious, was one of the criticisms we got when we were working on it was, well, you're going to have 50 different immigration laws. Our position on that was, yes, so if you want to solve that, federal government, pass comprehensive legislation because your legislation would supersede ours. So what we were hoping to do is by passing those measures that we would, A, put pressure on and, and not related, not unrelated, put a spotlight on the federal government. Unfortunately, you know, you can only do what you can do, but that's, that was part of the motivation behind what we were trying to do.
Yeah, and I think the state has succeeded, you know? Missouri has zero sanctuary cities. So I think the state has done a good job. They've picked up where the federal government has failed. But again, until the federal government gets off their asses and actually does something, nothing's going to change. And again, it goes back to the toxic partisan politics that we've seen and, you know, I'm not going to get into all that, but you know, look at, look at our foreign policy. Republicans don't want to fund Ukraine, but they want to give money to Israel. So it's like, it's just, it's just both parties suck. That's why I'm an independent. I don't want to offend any of you guys, but I hate partisan politics. I think it's screwing up our country and that's why I'm an independent. But that's all I was trying to say is.
Sure. By the way, one point of information is also that there are lots of unnecessary, in my opinion, complicated laws at the federal level.
Oh, absolutely.
And the body of work that constitutes the immigration laws of this country at the federal level are complex and contradictory in so many ways. So there is a huge problem there. So I think that we as local government, whether state, local, county, whatever, the best we can do is try to, to go forward with something that makes sense to the people that we answer to directly and encourage to the degree that it is possible for our federal representatives to work in a little more unison.
Yeah, and so that's why I, I put in here, you know, that just, and my, and my proposal was just to encourage the local municipalities to follow state and federal law. And that's why I made a point to also say unincorporated Clay County, since we can't tell cities what to do, but we can control our jurisdiction, which is unincorporated Clay County, so.
But one other, and I don't mean to be nitpicky about it, but I, one of the words that you used was uninvited. Unfortunately, the mayor of Kansas City did invite.
Well, I said uninvited illegals. So I mean, we could always change that to take out uninvited and put in.
I just say that in case you're, we go forward with yours so that at least I've, I've made some thoughts known so that they can be considered.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. So many people have broken the ice already, since a few of the things, I'll try not to be repetitive. I would remind to our colleague's point that there was national legislation coming forward three months ago that was actually championed by one of the most conservative US senators in the country from Oklahoma and got shot down by his own party. So I tend to agree with the notion that there are those who want these out as wedge issues and not necessarily want to solve them, be that as it may. Not to be too repetitive from when we spoke about this two weeks ago, and I do accept the experience of our colleague, because he's seen, he has seen things in his position. I will remind everyone that I, for the last five years, have worked for an agency who 87% of their clientele are Hispanic and Latino. So let me tell you, I've seen a little few things myself and I've worked in a neighborhood for 20 years in various capacities that have seen folks who have come here illegally, violated the law, got sent back, and then came right back six months later. And I've seen a lot of folks who have shown up and actually have their I-10 numbers and pay income taxes to the United States government. So, I mean, you kind of have both flavors. But be that as that may, my struggle is in understanding what we are trying to do. Because the reality is, there is nothing we can do if someone shows up from Denver or New York. There is no sign that we will, we will put out in Clay County that says, better have your papers if you don't go back where you came from. That, that's not, that's not going to happen. And I would also go on to say that in Clay County, I am quite positive that there are a number of individuals who do not have those papers, who would be deemed as illegal in that way. But as remarked a couple of weeks ago, I have no understanding of what that means to us, what Clay County pays for that, which then makes it even more difficult to say, well, what does that mean if folks come over? Which by the way, after three weeks that that announcement's been out there, I couldn't tell you who has come from Denver, New York, or anywhere else for that matter. So from the standpoint of the pressures being put on or potentially put on to our budget, I don't know what those are. And I don't think there's anyone anywhere who can tell me what those are. So we are left with, what is it that we are trying to say? What is the, what is the message that we are trying to give, whether it's to the, to individuals, whether it's to the mayor of Kansas City, which by the way, if he still is ignoring our TIF commission stuff, then pieces of paper don't really mean a whole lot to him, quite honestly. So I don't really think that's going to send much of a message to him, whatever we pass. So what is, what are we left with? In my opinion, if it is just, we simply want to say, we're not like that guy and therefore we want to reiterate what our position is, okay. But I think being simple in doing so is best. My suggestion is, I'm actually okay with these wherashes that, Commissioner, that you've identified. You're very good, I've noted, over the last year and a half. If it's a Missouri law, you're going to find it. And, and you do a good job of that. And it is excellent to remind folks, hey, this is what your law is saying. I do tend to then go to the side of Commissioner Withington as far as these actions and what we are saying our position is. I think if, if the issue is, we do not want to be viewed as a sanctuary county, then say it. And I think Commissioner Withington does so. So my druthers, if to the extent that those are important druthers to have, is I, I see a combination of those whereas clauses that are here before us. I see bringing in those actions and those, what is resolved, those resolutions, those messages that we want to put forward as Commissioner Withington has brought forward. I think that this is, here are the facts and here's our position. And I, and I feel that's a pretty simple way of approaching that. And that's kind of where I'm at. So thank you.
Commissioner Johnson, and then Commissioner Lawson, you will be recognized next, after Commissioner Johnson.
Okay, I've got quite a few comments here. First of all, it's talked about the cost. Just for the record, Mayor Quentin Lucas himself from Kansas City said there will be a cost to this. He said himself, you're going to have to reevaluate the budget. Those aren't exact words, but I read it to you last, what, last couple of weeks ago what his tweet was. He said that, essentially said there will be a cost to this. As far as the feds, doesn't matter what the feds do, we don't control the feds. We can't control the feds. And talking to our congressman, by the way, Commissioner Withington, my congressman is also your congressman, so you can talk to him as well as I can. We can all talk to him.
Yours is, uh, theirs.
They're in the same Congress. So you can talk to him as well as we can. So, yeah, and so have I, so.
That's why I said we're simple.
Yeah, and we've done that as well. It hasn't fixed anything. And I'm not holding my breath for that to fix anything. I'm not holding my breath for the, for the feds or anybody else to fix this. What is the message? And that's what Commissioner, who said that?
Scott.
Scott said that, yeah. Let's blame Scott. You know, what is the message trying to get at? So here's the deal, and I want to go back to, we, I think it's very important that we establish a culture of what's accepted and what's not accepted here. That's what leaders do. They establish the culture. And I think it's very important that we establish the culture that illegal aliens, as the law says, are not welcome in Clay County. That's not a law that we're writing or something that we're making up. We're just reiterating what the laws are on the books. And it baffles me, quite frankly, it baffles me that my colleagues just don't want to say that. I want to read now exactly, I'm going to start with the first two wherashes in my resolution. Says, whereas recent news reports and social media posts have expressed an invitation to immigrants living in sanctuary cities such as Denver and New York to relocate to Kansas City, Missouri, to the Kansas City, Missouri, Missouri area and Clay County. Whereas many Clay Countyans have raised the concern of illegal immigrants coming to Clay County as a result of this invitation. Then I list the laws. Not every single law, but some of the state and federal laws in regards to immigration, in regards to sanctuary cities, in regards to hiring illegals, in regards to encouraging illegals to come here, and in regards to providing transportation for illegals to come here for employment. And this is what the resolves are. I want to read the resolves. And it baffles me that you guys would be against these resolves because they're very clear and very simple and it takes a stand. And by the way, the reason why I don't like Commissioner Withington is because I don't think, I think it's too soft. When you say, we will not directly open shelters or provide services, to me, that's saying, well, we won't do it, but we'll let anybody else do it. That's what that says to me. That's not, that doesn't have enough teeth in it. This is what I think is important. Therefore be it resolved, Clay County does not welcome, does not welcome any illegal aliens or other criminals to Clay County. Furthermore, Clay County supports the above state and federal laws and any other laws pertaining to aliens and their full enforcement by federal, state, and local authorities empowered to do so. The next resolve says, and be it therefore resolved, or be it further resolved, Clay County is a welcoming community to all immigrants who enter this country legally and desire to be a productive member of our community. Why would anybody disagree with that? That's what I understand. We're welcoming those who want to be productive members in here illegally and we're saying, if you're illegal, you're not welcome. We're taking a stand. We're establishing a culture. I don't care what Q says, or Mayor Lucas says, we're establishing a culture here. And we, we can look at all sorts of motives why he's doing this and it came out last month, well, just political. Well, playing political games can have a huge consequence in our county, a huge consequence. And by the way, if you haven't heard, just today on KCMO, Pete Munder's show, Mayor Lucas was on there and he was asked about his appointment or his nomination to be the HUD secretary in the, in the Biden administration. So apparently, there's talk that he may be the HUD secretary in the Biden administration. Mayor Lucas didn't confirm that, he didn't deny it, he just says he's been in talks with the Biden administration and he'll do what's best for his family and his country. That makes a lot of sense why he put this out last month, to me, speculation, I'll admit on my part. But nonetheless, politics, playing politics like this in this county is not good. We need to establish a culture so not, I don't care what, what Mayor Lucas thinks. This isn't for Mayor Lucas, because he doesn't care what we do anyway. I don't care what he thinks. What I care is the message that goes out to all the illegal immigrants and all the other illegals in the sanctuary cities who think that we might be welcoming in here that say, so we tell them, no, you're not welcome here. You're not welcome here, period. That's all we got to say. And nobody will stand up and say that. Well, a couple will, but I don't understand why the rest of you won't stand up and say, hey, you're not welcome here. Number one, it's illegal. The laws are very clear. We're not writing any laws. It's the laws. They apply to the county, they apply to every city in this county, they apply to every city and every county in the state. We're not making any laws here. We're just reiterating what those laws are and saying, hey, if you're illegal, you're not welcome, period. And to not stand up for that? And to not stand up for that, and to back away from that, that's worrisome for me. And that's where we start to develop this culture where, hey, Clay County's got a wishy-washy commission, they're not really solid on this illegal immigrant thing either. And, you know, if we pass a resolution, they, they will not directly open shelters, but that doesn't mean they're stopping shelters from being opened. That doesn't mean they're stopping us from allowing illegals to come here. No, we need to be clear on that. And that's why I wrote it exactly like this, Clay County does not welcome any illegal, and these are other criminals to Clay County. We support the above stated, state and federal laws. And I hope you guys take a look at those laws, and there's more on the books, but they're very clear, that we can't have a sanctuary city. Nobody can have a sanctuary city in Missouri. And no one's going to come right out and say, hey, we're going to have a sanctuary, even if that's what Mayor Lucas wanted, to create a sanctuary city. He's not going to say that, he can't say that. It's illegal for him to even encourage that, according to our state codes. But he's going to create a culture through his actions and through his words that will make people feel comfortable coming, illegals, that is, comfortable in coming to this county and to Kansas City. That's the culture that we have to make sure we're clear about. That's a culture that as leaders, we need to establish and say, no, you're not welcome here. If you're here legally, we'll welcome you with open arms. If you're not here legally, we're taking a stand and saying, no, you are not welcome here, period. And why, period. And why anybody would not say that, why any elected official would not come right out and say, hey, we backed these laws and you're not welcome, baffles me. And it makes me wonder what other, what other politics are being played here. This is very, this, there's no politics involved in this resolution. It's to the point, it shows the law, and it says, hey, we will support these laws. Illegals are not welcome, period.
Commissioner Lawson.
Well, illegal is illegal. And, you know, I, I think that while Commissioner Withington has said it very plainly and exact, the thing that I like about Commissioner Johnson's is that it really throws out those laws. It shows what those laws are and, and what, you know, why, what we're going to put into action and our standards by which we're going to run this county. I feel that we can't be strong enough. You know, it, it is, it, there was a thing on the news today where an illegal came in, I believe it was Texas, and they caught him, I guess they'd sent him once and he came back. They got him and, and they let him go. They didn't keep him, they let him go. He grabbed an 11-year-old girl and raped her, and the mother saw that he had taken the child to this van, and she went up there and started yelling and beating on the van and everything, he ran away. They got him and they're holding him. But, but if we think that things like that can happen here, it can. This is such a safe county. I've lived here for 50 years, and, and I love it, and, but I think it's time for us to be very strong on this. We're not keeping anybody out. It plainly says, legal is fine, we welcome you, and we do. But we need to be very, very strong on this. We need to go ahead and get something done so we can say, as a commission, we've taken a stand, and we will not allow illegals in this county. Yeah, they're going to be here, they're going to be here. And, and they, you see them, every time you go to a banquet, they're working the banquet, they're working all over the place. You know, go to a Mexican restaurant, they're there. And, and even, at one time, the, the people in Carney knew that a number of those guys that worked there were illegal. That was known, it was a known thing, nothing ever happened. That's just saying, we don't care, we're not going to take a stand. His, his document says it real plain and very strongly, I'm, I'm tired of wishy-washing it around. Let's, let's do something that makes it very plain what our stand is. So, I mean, for my, my take, I'd like to just call for the question and, and go ahead and vote however it ends up.
Um, just for a point of order, there is no question, this is discussion.
Oh, we can't do it on this one, can we? Why can't we go ahead and vote on it?
Because there is no question. You said call the question, to call the question, there has to be a question in existence. There is no question under discussion, this is only discussion. It has to be a agenda item.
That what?
Now, it has to be, now, should Commissioner Johnson put it forward as a resolution, then that kind of, that kind of an action would be in order, but at the moment, it is not.
Okay, well, what, what do you consider this?
This is a discussion item, because the, the reason that we brought it up was, and during the time that we've, we've altered some of our procedures, we have had discussions leading up to the presentation of a resolution. So my guess is the Commissioner Johnson will take the, the discussion, use that to take a look at his resolution and do whatever, whatever changes he sees fit, and then present it as a resolution, which we then will have the ability to vote on. And at that point, if we've had a long discussion and, and the previous question is called, then that would be, that would be in order.
So, so he takes this back, and we wait another week, and, and you make it a resolution, maybe you could work with Jason and, and kind of, oh. He was joking, he said no. And, and maybe incorporate, but I think we need to be as strong as we can, that's my, my take. So whatever the next step is, let's put the damn thing down.
Commissioner Withington, you are next.
So I thought I had 100% attendance record, but apparently there's a meeting I missed because Jay, you just said that people aren't, aren't agreeing, are saying that they're fine with illegal immigration. I mean, I sat here for an hour and a half, two weeks ago, not one person up here said they approved of illegal immigration. So I don't know why you're getting so frustrated in saying that we, we're not, you know, we're not support, we're supporting illegal immigration. I mean, I, nobody tonight has even said they support illegal immigration. Everybody up here has said they support legal immigration, they are against illegal immigration. So I don't know why, why, you know, you're, you're saying that we're, we're not, just because we, maybe we're not being as strong as you want, but we can't tell cities what to do. We can control what we do as a body, so by going out and saying, Clay County doesn't welcome, what if this, how, how's that going to make us look if we say we don't support as a county, illegal immigration or being a sanctuary? Hold on, let me finish. Sanctuary, but then the cities don't listen to us. Is that going to make us look weak? Is that going to make us? Like, I don't understand, like, all I'm saying is, we need to stay in our lane, and we need to control what we can control. And as a Clay County Commission, we can encourage cities, villages, and municipalities to follow state and federal law. That's all we can do, that's not being weak? Hell, I said I liked your resolution, and I haven't heard one person up here speak against your resolution, and I haven't heard one person say that they approve illegal immigration.
Commissioner, you are recognized, your microphone is on so that you can have an interaction.
Thanks. So first of all, so then you support my resolution? You'll vote yes for it if it comes up next week?
I said I would.
Okay, perfect. That's all I needed. Because the, the difference between mine and yours is, mine says, Clay County does not welcome illegal aliens. It says it.
So are we speaking for the municipalities in that?
I'm speaking for the law. And yeah, so here's the other thing, you said we can't tell cities what to do, we can tell them anything we want to tell them. Whether they do it or not, it's up to them. But we can certainly tell them, hey, this is the law.
And that's what I've been telling you the whole time is to encourage us to follow the law.
If the city doesn't want to follow the law, we can certainly pursue the avenues to make sure that city does follow the law, whether it's, whether it's bringing the states or the, or the feds, or whoever has the authority to deal with that. Some of the things are, are state laws, some of the things that can't be handled at the state level.
And the state's doing things, right?
So, so let me just read one of the wherethes that maybe some of you guys aren't aware about. One of my wherethes says, whereas the state of Missouri strictly prohibits any municipality from enacting or adopting any sanctuary policies for illegal aliens. It further states, and I quote, "The governing body, sheriff, or chief of police of each municipality shall provide each law enforcement officer with written notice of their duty to cooperate with state and federal agencies and officials on matters pertaining to enforcement of state and federal laws governing immigration." That's the law. That's the Missouri state law. So yeah, we can certainly tell cities, hey, this is the Missouri state law, and yes, you better follow the Missouri state law.
And that's what I've been saying this entire time, is telling the municipalities to encourage them. But is there any sanctuary cities in Clay County right now?
I don't, I don't know of any.
No, okay. Are there any in the state of Missouri?
Well, first of all.
So all I'm saying is, Jay.
Wait, wait, I'm not saying there's not any in Missouri.
What's that?
I'm not saying there's not, a sanctuary city is just someone who doesn't cooperate with the feds.
Yeah.
On immigration. I'm not saying, we don't know that that doesn't exist already.
All I'm saying to you is, I've been in every meeting you've been in.
Yeah.
So when you sat up here a few minutes ago and said that you were taken back or whatever, that we, the people up here were supporting illegal immigration, I, I never heard that. We can go back and watch the, watch the meeting together. I have not heard one person up here say that. So that was incorrect statement. Just because somebody didn't speak up in favor of your resolution doesn't mean that they're for illegal immigration. Not one person up here has said that they support illegal immigration.
Yeah, but let me make it clear, what my resolution does, and again, this goes back to establishing the culture. My resolution, which is different from the others, is makes it very clear, Clay County does not welcome illegal aliens.
Well, I would hope that this commission would then use their leadership and not just one person like me who's been beating the, the drums. Clay County is the least walkable county, kids can't even get to school safely. So I would hope that this commission then would pass a resolution, if I write it, saying that we're going to demand every school has sidewalks. Would you support that?
Who's funding that?
Who's funding this?
Exactly.
We're not.
Exactly. No, no, no. Our citizens in Clay County will fund illegals if they come here.
Okay, then, well, then we'll say that the citizens of Clay County have to fund sidewalks.
How? A tax increase?
How are we going to fund, who's funding this? The county's not going to pay for anything for this. We don't even know, if we budget nothing for this, for services, then Clay County's paying nothing.
So what you don't understand, what this, what this resolution does, this prevents, this prevents us from having to spend tax dollars. By establishing a culture that says, hey, we don't want any illegal immigrants, matter of fact, I'm going to have to read another wherest to you. It says, it says, whereas Missouri state law also prohibits illegal aliens from receiving state or local public benefits, as well as any public funds for post-secondary education. Those are both state laws, that's two different state laws I just quoted right there.
So if state laws already says this, then we don't have to do anything because state law is already dictating it, right?
No, we need to do something.
We're reinforcing that is what this does. I don't understand why you would argue this.
Well, I'm not, I'm just saying, what pissed me off was when you said that we supported illegal immigration. Not one person up here has spoken favor of illegal immigration. So I don't understand why you would say that we were supporting illegal immigration.
So it's, it's putting into a resolution that distinctly says, very specifically says, Clay County does not welcome any illegal aliens.
So we, we, we agree that we've all said that. So can you tell me where one person?
We've all said that? We all, we all agree with that?
Yeah, I, I think everybody has said that. Well, hold on for, hey, hold on.
Hold on.
Hey, hold on for a second.
Hold on a moment. I can't, we can have two individuals, two commissioners discussing, but it cannot become a free-for-all. Therefore, I want to limit these discussions to two commissioners.
I had the floor, it's my time.
You have the floor, and Commissioner Johnson has the floor. Now, you might want to inquire Commissioner Carpenter, but we need to break this conversation off so that we have some semblance of organization.
I just have one question. Jay, has anybody up here said that they support illegal immigration?
They didn't say those words, but they did say, we'd like a softer approach, and your approach was softer in the sense that it says, we will not directly open shelters.
Okay.
And your approach does not say that illegals are not welcome here in Clay County. So that's a softer approach. That's an approach that does not say illegals are, are not welcome here in Clay County. I want to approach it, makes it very clear.
Okay, but, but you agree that, but you agree that not one person up here has said that they agree with illegal immigration?
Well, Mayor Lucas has said the same thing.
But I'm not Mayor Lucas, and none of these people up here are Mayor Lucas. All I'm saying to you is, it pissed me off when you said that we were in favor of illegal immigration because not one person up here has said that they agree with illegal immigration.
Well, and it makes me upset that nobody, that not everybody will say, we do not want any illegals in this county, and we're going to write that in our resolution. Illegal immigrants are, illegal aliens, as the law says, are not welcome in Clay County. Can we all agree on that?
I already told you.
Will everybody, you think everyone's going to agree on that?
Ask them. I can only speak for myself.
And, and I'm speaking for what's already been said. We want a softer approach. Softer than illegals are not welcome here? What's softer than illegals are not welcome here? Well, they're kind of not welcome.
I'll say it, illegals aren't welcome here.
Well, you'll support my resolution, from what I understand.
I've already said that.
So we're good to go.
I said that, but I just don't like you putting words in people's mouth, saying that they are in favor of illegal immigration or whatever, because not one, I've been to every meeting, I've listened to it, and not one person up here has said that they're in favor of illegal immigration.
Well, the feeling I'm getting is that people don't want to, not anybody wants to stand up and make a solid stance on it, and make it very clear, you're not welcome. You're not welcome here.
Gentlemen, if we could, if we could round off this part of the discussion, there are three other commissioners seeking recognition, I would certainly entertain coming back to you guys if you, if you want to discuss it further.
I have nothing else to say.
With that, in order of those who are queued up, we have Commissioner Wagner, Commissioner Thompson, and then Commissioner Carpenter, so if we can, ah, Commissioner Carpenter is dropped off, so, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wagner, and then we'll go to Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Wagner, you are recognized.
Uh, thank you. Perhaps I'll open with an old saying, money talks and something else walks. You can say you don't welcome anybody, you can say, I welcome everyone, you can say, my approach is soft, you can say, your approach is harder, but what I do know at the end of the day is that money is what creates action. And I use that by using another thing that Kansas City did, and you and I spoke about this a couple of weeks ago. Some of you may recall, would have been about three years ago, when, when the city of Kansas City opened Bartle Hall to the homeless population. And then a year later, opened up and paid for, I believe to the tune of $20,000, to create opportunities for folks to live in hotels and motels. Remember that? That resulted, and I know that because of the work that I do, daytime, a whole new influx and population of homeless individuals. Money talked, money said, Kansas City is open, and people responded. Now, I do know the million dollars that the mayor has talked about is not just for issues related to this, but their whole welcoming package, being able to do multiple languages and accommodate those who may speak other languages beyond English, which in Kansas City includes not only Spanish, but Swahili, Congolese, Burmese, and a host of other languages. I go back to what is the purpose? And I like the language I hear over here because it speaks to actual services, because with services comes money. And if we are not supplying services, then we are not spending money, which I think is the whole thing we are afraid is happening, or not afraid, it is happening in Denver, New York, and other places. I subscribe to the notion of action. It is not merely enough to hold up a sign, and you'll forgive me for saying it that way, but it is not enough for me to say, I'm going to hold up a sign and say, you're not welcome here. To me, the greater benefit of the language that was provided by our, our commissioner is that we're not spending money. Because if there's, if, if there is no great service that is provided, if there is nothing, if we're saying, we are not housing, we are not doing this, we are not doing that, then it's going to be very clear to everybody in the county that you cannot look to Clay County to take care of the problem. It's not, that's not what we're going to do. I apologize if it is, if it appears soft, but again, if, if, if we say we are not spending money, that makes it pretty clear, if you come to Clay County, which by the way, the biggest city in Clay County is Kansas City, so that's the problem anyway. But if, if on the one hand we are saying we are not spending money, on the second hand we are saying we are not associating with how this has been described by the, by described, uh, by the, by the mayor of Kansas City, if we have concern that, because, and we do say in this, whereas sanctuary policies are unlawful. So, if we are saying we are not a sanctuary county, that to me speaks to something of value. So, I'll, it's probably more than I intended to say, but, um, actually, this, I have to use this point. Thank you. If we are saying that no public funds are being used for post-secondary education, are we saying that we are going to essentially sue school districts in this state, in this county? Well, I don't know, but, because then again, it gets back to who brings, who brings actions on these prohibitions? Is that the county's role? Don't think so. Um, but again, um, I just find that is a very curious thing. If we are going to be does-not, capital letters, then are we going to basically say, sheriff, you've gotta take actions, school districts, you've gotta take actions, other jurisdictions, you have to take actions? Again, I don't think we can, but again, that's a question of language. I just go back again, money talks, everything else walks. If you're saying you're not spending money, to me, that says you are not welcome here, and I'll leave it at that. I think otherwise, you've heard the other spiel. Thank you.
I believe Commissioner Johnson was wanting to inquire of you.
Commissioner?
So, if you wanna push your button, I'll go ahead and activate your microphone as well. Proceed, gentlemen.
Commissioner Wagner, I, I agree a hundred percent, I think you're right. It's, it's, it's really about the money, in many cases. And if you like some of the language that, that Commissioner Whittington has on his, that lists more specific what you don't get, what we won't give you, I'm more than happy to put that in. I kinda steer clear of that, cuz I just wanted to put exactly what the law said, and I put in there, I already read to you, that said, uh, prohibit from receiving any state or local public benefits, as well as any funds for post-secondary education. That's in the law, but I'd be more than happy to include the language that, uh, Commissioner Whittington had on some of the specific things that, uh, we will not provide. Um, which come with money, which I would actually like even better, but I, I didn't, I didn't, I wanted to keep it more black and white. But, I'm all for that, and I'll certainly add that.
Yeah, I mean, I, to, at the end of the day, uh, to the point that was made earlier by Commissioner Whittington, which I agree with, there are certain purviews that we have, right? Um, what are those purviews? Because then that speaks to, this is what Clay County is prepared to do and not do.
Right.
That to me is, displays an action-
Yeah.
-that we are prepared to take. And to me, that makes, I, I shouldn't say more sense. I, I tend to, I tend to go towards the action. If we're gonna go through all this trouble, if we're gonna take the time that we have taken tonight, then I tend to think it makes sense to be very clear, these are the actions we're taking, this is who we are, this is who we're not, so that anyone who looks at this down the road, or whomever, knows exactly what to expect from us.
I agree.
So, so, I mean, I, 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 I understand the, what your intention here is. I tend to go on the side of what are we in control of, and speak to that.
So, I agree with that, and I'm a law guy, so I looked at, to the law for that, and I, so I thought that was all contained in here, but obviously, if you're not, if you're not reading it the way I read it, then I could simply just add that. That same language that, that's in, uh, Commissioner Whittington's. I'm more than happy to do that, to add that to it. It's already too long, so I might as well make it up. But, uh, I mean, that's simple.
You smaller.
But, but to me, it's the same concept, is hey, you don't, don't expect coming here for handouts if you're illegal.
Right.
Um, yeah, I'm with you on that.
Um, I'm gonna go ahead and make a couple of comments, and I'm gonna recognize Commissioner Johnson to close out the discussion, since it's, um, his, his item. Uh, as far as sanctuary cities go, there is a procedure in place, uh, that is triggered by a complaint, and then it goes to, I believe, the A.G., I would have to review that. So, to say that there are no sanctuary cities just means that there has not been, a procedure has not been initiated yet, it may well be. So, it is yet to be determined, um, Kansas City, in my opinion, is moving towards acting like a sanctuary city, but the actual legal, uh, definition must be determined by the, the competent legal authorities. Um, another thing that occurs to me, and I, I think we've all seen this, and that those who come to this country following the legal methods is a much longer process. And I think, uh, I, I think there is some, I think there might be some understandable resentment that they are, that there are those cutting in line ahead. I think it's a short-term gain myself, but it, it does create that. Um, one of the things I really like about Commissioner Johnson's effort is the specific citing of existing law. What that does is it takes us a little bit out of the equation. It takes us saying, we are a lawful county, we, we obey the law, and this isn't just us going off on a tangent, this is us saying, this is the law of the land, and we will, uh, honor it. Um, the mayor's clarification on his, on, on his, uh, statement, I think came only after, uh, some comment was made throughout, not just the metro area, but, but even beyond the borders of our metropolitan area. Um, so I don't know that this is necessarily just a piece of paper, although I do tend to think that the mayor is not always listening as closely as I'd hope. Um, but I do think his clarification was a result of some of that pushback, and I don't think we should underestimate the, um, impact of taking a principled position. And of, uh, really, that's a lot of it there. Like, the last thing I wanna say is, uh, obviously, I'm not a stranger to this discussion and this debate. Um, I think we've had a good vigorous debate on this. I, I appreciate the fact that we've had so many opinions expressed. We are not a homogeneous, everybody is in lockstep. That is, I think, part of the strength of this commission, is we have vigorous discussion, and we are able to come together and do something constructive, even on a subject of this sort, which is, uh, quite, it can be quite contentious. Um, I wanna congratulate all involved who put some work in on this, because I think it is difficult, it is complicated, and I think at the end of the day, we have to recognize that all who spoke here are speaking with goodwill and good intention. There just may well be some disagreements, and that's at the end of the day where we need to be. I myself, uh, like what Commissioner Johnson has done. I'm anxious to see, uh, what he sees as, uh, changes he would like to make before we go forward on it. But, uh, this has been a vigorous discussion, I think it's been productive. It's been long, but, uh, I, I think everybody has had the opportunity to, to have their say. With that, I'd like to go ahead and, and recognize Commissioner Johnson, if he would like to go ahead and just conclude the discussion, uh, since it's, it is your item to work on. So, Commissioner, if you'd like to close out our discussion, we will move on on our agenda.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I appreciate healthy public debates, I love this stuff myself, but, so, uh, I appreciate it. What I'd like to do is, um, add some of the, some of the language that Commissioner Whittington had in his, like we discussed, and then I'd like to bring it back, um, on the agenda for next week, if we can do that. For a vote.
Yeah, what I would like is consensus from the commission that you want something on the agenda next week for consideration for a vote. And it sounds like, um, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Whittington will work together, and maybe what the final product is, we'll submit and put in your packet.
Is it the consensus of the commission, that, uh, assuming that the, there's sufficient time to prepare it, that we hear it next week, or as soon thereafter is, as practical? Is that what everybody would like to do? Just look for head nods? Okay, it seems to be the consensus, so, uh, I believe, do you have enough instruction to go forward, commi-, uh, administrator?
I'll be looking for that resolution.
Very good. Um, it should be a little, go a little more quickly after this point. So, reports, we have, uh, one report, administrator?
Um, yes, there is, pardon me, there is one res, uh, one report in your packet, that is the, uh, auditor's monthly cash basis report for April 2024.
Uh, with that, we have county administrator comments, please proceed.
Um, just, um, two, actually. The commission's next meeting will be next Thursday, May 16th, at six o'clock here in the chambers, and then we certainly want to wish all the mothers, uh, a happy Mother's Day.
With that, we come to commissioner comments, we will start with, Commissioner Carpenter, we'll start with you. Any comments? Okay, Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Wagner?
Just, uh-
Hold on, let me get you activated.
Happy Mother's Day as well, and we, we didn't get the report, but I am hoping that our, uh, our staff ate a lot of tacos, got a lot of massages, and, and, and saw a lot of goats, uh, so.
The goats were absolutely, probably, the highlight of the week for boys. And then, um, tomorrow, if you're out and about and in the area, wanna stop by and join us for, um, Casey Whip, uh, will be, um, in front of the courthouse on the south side, um, with Dole, Dole Whip, sort of, and, uh, we'll have some live entertainment.
Awesome, well, and, and finally, to those parents who, like me, will be picking up their kids from college for the summer, uh, be careful in that traffic, and let the person who's trying to get their kid's stuff out of the dorm have that chance to do it. That may be more self-promotion from myself and, and us, but good luck with that movement. Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson?
The only thing I wanted to say was that, after y'all put me on the board for Missouri Association of Counties, I went to my first meeting, um, yesterday. It was a nightmare driving down there, cuz it was bad weather. But, man, it was worth it, it was worth every minute of it. Um, I'm thoroughly gonna enjoy this. Um, they, they gave us good legislative reports. They shared some information from other counties that I feel will be helpful to us. And I'll kinda write up the report and send it out to everybody. But, uh, it, that is a worthwhile organization, and I'm really looking forward to working with them.
Commissioner Whittington?
Uh, I just wanna say happy Mother's Day to all the ladies also. Um, and then, we also got some good news today. Uh, I, the budget in the senate passed, I-35, I-29, that interchanged, the fifty-three million's still in there. Probably pass the house tomorrow, and then, uh, just give everybody an update. Uh, I had a meeting today with, uh, United States Senator Eric Schmidt's office about the Harlem Riverfront and Clay County Riverfront. Had a really good conversation there, and then, next week, we will be meeting with Congressman Emmanuel Cleaver to discuss riverfront funding also, so. Moving that plan forward, so.
I wanted to join the other commissioners who, uh, certainly wish, um, all of our mothers, those that are with us, and those that are, uh, watching over us, um, happy Mother's Day. I don't think that there's a, uh, I, I don't think there's an example of, a better example of, uh, pure love than the, than of a mother. So, certainly, thank you, uh, to all of our mothers, and all those who accept the roles as mothers, because sometimes mothers are not necessarily blood relations, but they certainly do perform the task of, uh, of that kind of support, and that kind of, um, just love is the only word I can think of. So, with that, uh, we are scheduled to go into executive sessions. Is there a motion related to our executive sessions? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir, I move, we move into executive session for two, for personnel and contractual matters under RSMO 610.021 subsections three and 12.
Motion's been made for us to go into executive session, for personnel, Missouri statute 610.021 parentheses three, and contractual, same section parentheses 12, and to adjourn therefrom. Discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter? Commissioner Whittington? Commissioner Lawson? Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
To executive session, to an, and adjourn therefrom, thank you very much.